So I'd like to call today's Park and Rec Town of Atherton meeting for May 1st. May I have the roll call, please?
Committee member Eisner. Committee Chair Key.
Here.
Committee member Merrill.
Here.
Committee member Robertson.
Here.
Committee member Robinson is not here today. Committee member Roser.
Rob.
Council liaison Degora is not here at all.
Okay, and staff is here? Many staff. Are there any public comments or items not on the agenda? Not on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead Ken. Yes, where there's a microphone, I don't know if there's a microphone.
This is where the control base is, that's the way it works. Got it, sorry, Ken Frederick from Londonwood. I'm actually here to talk about Jennings Pavilion and the senior committee. As you may know, there's a senior task force that was convened, it's not a formal committee, but we had a project over the summer to look at what the seniors want in Atherton. Actually, we're giving a report next week, which I'll pass out a piece of paper to you for about. We'd like you to come and make sure you pass it on. But one of the topics for the senior group was where to have meetings for seniors for various reasons. And when you look around the town, if you're going to get a group together for a meeting, really only two places are here, or the Jennings Pavilion. And one of the problems here is that it's, I use a lot, obviously, and also sometimes it just isn't the world's best layout for what we want to go do. So we're going to take a tour through the Jennings Pavilion and come back to you guys and say, look, if we wanted to use the Jennings Pavilion, I know you're looking at ways to change it, here's some ideas for you. So if that's okay with you guys, sometime in the next few weeks or so, we're going to take a tour, see if we can get Robert or somebody to let us in, and walk around and just say, look, if we were going to use this for meetings, here's the things we'd like to see. I'm sure they match what you're looking at anyway, it's just give you a different point of view. Is that fair? You can't answer me, can you?
Uh, not yet.
Don't forget.
So next Thursday is the kickoff meeting. Anyone who wants to be bigger, please come. You've got to go over 55. You've got to like one. You're not over 55, you must know something.
You're about to hit 30, right Bob?
It looks like 55. So the first kickoff meeting is going to be about 30. What we've learned so far, we've implemented, but basically something the seniors say what you guys want. So, we can't go because of the press.
Just want to remind committee members, if they want to ask a question or talk, they should make sure their mic is on. No presentations this month? We have the minutes approval next on the agenda? Is there a motion or any changes requested? Any seconds? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or names? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Regular agenda, 5A playground improvements.
Thank you Chair members of the committee. This is going to be a brief update. We appreciate all the feedback that we've gotten from you folks on the conceptual designs. The consultant is working on refining those and putting them on boards, and we are looking at sending out postcards within the, either the end of this week, beginning of next week for public meeting at the park, where we'll solicit input, target is the 22nd.
And there will be one meeting or two?
Just one.
Just one, okay. 22nd, and that will be during the evening or day?
I think we're looking at 5 to 7, so it'll kind of flex through the evening, and so it'll be an open forum for folks to kind of give us opinions on the things that we have talked about.
They've been set for that?
What's that?
What's the date been set?
Um, the date?
The date, yeah.
22nd.
22nd is the target.
Okay, May 22nd.
And so it'll be at the playground, outside?
What time?
I believe the target is 5 to 7, we'll be formalizing it and preparing postcards and doing the e-blast.
Okay.
And we'll supplement it with kind of those additional folks that we sent the outreach to when we did the survey as well.
Oh, great, great. The postcard is going to every resident?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
The consultant is doing the estimate, right? What's the current estimate for the playground?
I don't recall off the top of my head.
Is there a budget?
Uh, the budget is up for adoption with the council for the next fiscal year. The forecasted budget was at a million, and we will see if that holds as the council approves the capital program for next year.
If it's one million, does that not include the bathrooms?
It does not include the bathrooms.
Okay.
The council did have their CIP meeting today, that was that?
We will talk about that when we get to it on the agenda.
Okay, well, I thought it was related because it's, that's fine, that's fine, we can do that. Are there any other items that the committee needs to discuss for the playground at this point?
So the other item is, is that as you are aware, the design contract that we have includes figuring out and laying out the bathrooms for the park. So there was a subcommittee meeting to discuss some options, and we've received some feedback, that'll be further refined and probably brought back again to a subcommittee for discussion before coming back to the full committee with a layout.
Okay, you expect that the full committee will see it in June or July?
Should be able to take a look at it in June.
By June, okay, okay. Not, I mean, not just a subcommittee, but for?
No, no, the full committee should be able to at least take a look and see kind of what the concepts are and provide some feedback.
Are there any questions? Or, well, first, any questions from the committee? Are there any public comments? Either online or in person? No? Okay. Any comments? If none, we can move on to the next topic. Okay, so the pickleball trial update is the next topic.
Just a couple of updates about the pickleball trial. Last week, on Tuesday, we installed the sound baffling. It's gone up on two of the fence areas. I went the next day and a couple of days after and talked to some of the pickleball people that were playing and the tennis people, and everybody's pretty happy with the setup. They seem to like the, you know, the drop in noise and drop in everything. So that seems to be working out pretty well. The pickleball numbers themselves have gone up almost, or more than doubled in hours since last month. So it is getting a steady increase with the good weather, everybody's using the pickleball, you know, more and more. And that's all I have.
Do you have the numbers? Are they in the packet?
Yeah, they're in the packet.
Are there any questions for Will on pickleball?
I have a question, since I'm at the court pretty regularly, I got negative feedback for the time the pickleball was being played, and that would, you would expect from tennis players with having a pickleball court next to it. It was before the rubber was put up on the two sides. So maybe, maybe that helps things, maybe it doesn't, I can't tell. But certainly, the people who take lessons from Player Capital were not very happy of the ones I talked to. So I just didn't want it to think everything was great. It's not exactly everything's great, it's, we're getting there, but it's not there yet.
Yeah. Okay? Yeah, just to clarify, it was more of the sound baffling material and that the reduction in noise that people were happy with on both sides that I spoke to.
And, there you go, say, just a reminder, we do need to, staff has been kind of behind in terms of setting up the subcommittee meeting to discuss a survey, and so we do want to issue a survey out to the court users, both tennis and pickleball, to get feedback on what the thoughts are in terms of the usage of the courts, how it's laid out, what the issues and concerns are on both sides with regards to whether it's noise or difficulty in making reservations, or whatever the case may be, so that we can bring that back.
Will there be a list of issues or measurements or anything that's going to tell us that it's successful or not successful?
That's, like I said, I think that's a conversation with the subcommittee to kind of see how we want. I think the question is, how do we measure success? Or how do we measure whether or not it's something to continue? And that's, again, through the subcommittee and this committee in terms of developing a survey, so that we put it out there for people to provide the feedback that we all need.
The subcommittee is a subcommittee of this committee?
Correct, yes.
And has the subcommittee or this committee put down a list of items that they would like to see measured for a successful or not successful trial?
We have not yet, but I think that we've put in our agenda over the last few meetings the opportunity to either A, bring up those items, or you can share those items with staff and we can bring that to the subcommittee to kind of lay out in the survey, and that survey's going to come back to the committee before it gets released.
Okay, so maybe for the next meeting, what we should plan is for the subcommittee to have kind of questions and some guidance for how, yeah, maybe metrics, some recommendations and some questions that you think will be helpful. The committee will go over it and then we'll finalize it in the June meeting, and then staff can send it out in those following weeks, and then maybe we spend it.
So when the subcommittee puts together this list, does it come to this committee?
Yes, yeah, it'll come to, back to this committee in June, and then staff will send out the survey. We can decide at June exactly how long we want to have that survey open, it could be a month, it could be a month and a half, something like that, so.
We'll call it a post-trial survey to measure success. Just that we're talking about the same thing, so we're all talking?
Yes, well, it's during trial.
It's near the, I mean, it's during the trial. It's not, it's not in the middle and it's not after.
Okay, and is there a reason that we don't want to wait until the end of the trial?
Well, if there's things that we find that people really want changed, maybe we could change it before the trial ends.
Oh, okay, so it's just, it's just a midway assessment of?
Yeah, I mean, there's been enough time.
Yeah.
We could get some good data on that.
Yeah, and now that usage has picked up, we should be able to. But, but Robert, can I just ask a question? I couldn't hear, what was the issue that you raised after Will talked about?
The issue I raised was, I still don't understand how we're going to make a decision as to whether the trial is successful or unsuccessful.
Before that, you said you had a complaint before that, that things weren't going well, and I didn't hear what the reason was.
You mean when people said they weren't happy with it?
Yeah, what was that about?
I think there's a clear feeling of a pickleball on a tennis court from people who, Player Capital people are not happy with.
Player Capital people are not happy with having the striping of the pickleball on their tennis courts? Specifically having, okay, I just want to make sure I understand what the?
Right.
And when we, when we do the survey, we should also let Michael share it with his students as well, yeah.
So are we going to take the noise issue, which nationally is the biggest issue on pickleball? We're going to take that from what people think? Whether the noise is bothering them or not, including the houses and the people next to it and the people who play? How are we going to measure the noise? Because the graph I saw, I couldn't figure out, so.
Okay, so I think there.
Is there a way that we can stay with and without pickleball, the noise is X and Y, or?
I will split it up in trying to answer that in a couple of pieces. So there is the people perception and how they take in the noise. That's something that people need to provide us feedback, and one of the ways to get that to us is via the survey.
Okay.
Right, meaning that whatever that noise level is, however it's measured, if a user is saying it's too loud, or it's too this or too that, that's feedback that we're going to get direct from a user.
So you would then survey?
Get a question or two in the survey regarding noise.
So they would, you would survey Felton Gables then?
I don't know that we are directly soliciting anything from Felton Gables. This is going to be a survey at the park. To date, I personally have not gotten any complaints from any people at Felton Gables.
There hasn't been enough play.
So?
I mean, if this is the level of play that we have, then there will be no problem.
When we did the survey, we did send it to Felton Gables, didn't we?
We did?
I thought we, I thought we had sent out to a mail or something?
I don't think so.
Okay.
The second part is, we do have the sound measuring devices, and I did a download and handed it off to Walt before he left of about a month's worth of data. I would anticipate now that we have the baffling material up, the next month's worth of data would have the, after the baffling.
And the measurement is a measurement of the sound level?
Yes.
It doesn't, it doesn't discreet between, it doesn't have a regression of frequency?
You are correct.
Okay. But that's the big difference in pickleball, is frequency versus any other noise.
Okay.
Okay. Rick, you had a comment?
Yeah, I have too. I think that the issue as we go through this trial of what constitutes a successful versus an unsuccessful trial really needs to be decided by the committee, and I don't think there's ever been any objective criteria laid out that would represent a successful versus unsuccessful trial. I don't think that's a big deal, because we haven't had enough people playing, because the weather's been crappy. But now the weather's good, and as we go through the summer, you know, we're going to absolutely get more people playing. So I think the committee needs to schedule that discussion. And, and I think you've hit the issues, it's like, how much is it used? How much is the noise a problem? Is there any other annoyance that people have from it? I'm not sure what else there is, but I think it should be a discussion that the committee makes an objective decision around, so that as you get the data, you can assess it based on the benchmark of that criteria. The second thing is, it would be good to circulate the survey amongst the committees, so you can get feedback on any questions.
Yes.
And the third thing, I think it's important to reach out to Felton Gable residents. Maybe the first thing is just to let them know that the pickleball trial is going on, and we want to make sure whether or not they have, you know, have any reaction to it. And they, to date, my guess is they don't have much reaction, because, you know, hey, there haven't been that many people. But it's at the point where it's possible that there will, you know, it'll be used a lot more. I mean, and we, in the course of reaching out to them, I think we have to assess, irregardless of how we ask for it, the, the response of the Felton Gable residents to the noise, because my guess is the Felton Gable residents are annoyed by the tennis noise. I mean, I'm not certain of that, but, I mean, they've certainly gotten used to it, but at one point, that was a comment, and so we just sort of have to assess that. And that's not to say their assessment isn't important, I think it is important. But, you know, we just have to sort of put it into a context of.
Do we have any way of knowing how many pickleball players there are? Or who has bought keys? Or is it just, we don't know whether they're playing tennis or whether they're playing pickleball?
So, a key purchase allows you to make a reservation on any court?
Right.
The way to tell how many individual users would be to ask Player Capital, because when you make a reservation for the courts, you're putting your name and, and all of that. So you reserve the pickleball court the same way that you do the tennis court?
So that would be the time in Court 1?
Yes, the date, the data is actually up there and?
Two times and date 1, so, right?
One more time?
I said it's Court 1?
Yeah.
From morning and in the afternoon, which so far, there's been very few reservations.
Well, I think as noted in this, in the report later on, I think this last month, the number is around 50?
52.5.
52 hours or so?
That's up from 24 last month.
So, I think the, when we first started it, I mean, weather was really, really bad. There was like eight hours of use or something like that. It slowly ticked up as the weather has improved.
It went like 8, 16, 24, and then 50?
Yeah, so it's, it, like I said, it's a function of the weather. And also, we switched out keys in February, so key purchases are now on the upswing again, because the weather is better, people are now renewing their keys or buying new keys.
So, in the reservation system, we can see exactly who reserved and for how long, so we can?
So what is there, about 50 hours available?
Well, if you look at it, seven times, what about four in the morning? So that's 28, 28 a week in the mornings just by themselves, and then you have two evenings. So it's, what, probably about 30?
Hours?
36.
30 something hours?
35.
Something like that, a week, right?
Yeah.
So, 140 hours, call it 140 hours a month of it.
You're saying from the reservation system, we could tell if there's 40 hours available, we could see how many hours are?
Yeah, and that's in your report. Similar with tennis, you get the tennis numbers as to how many reservations are on the tennis courts. We have the same information on the reservations of the?
Okay, that'll give us a good feeling about the, how many are playing and what we should expect. Because we shouldn't expect much with what we have now, but it would be good to see how many people are using it, and hopefully there'll be enough that we'll be able to tell what, whether there's any issues. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm going to reiterate, if there's topic areas or questions that you think that the subcommittee should consider, this goes to all committee members, go ahead and feed them to staff and we can compile those in that conversation with the subcommittee.
Can we tell them now? Can, well, I can tell staff now, right?
No, okay, so it is a discussion item?
Yes.
So you can right now, but if you want to enumerate them, we're happy to take them outside of the context of the meeting and include them in the subcommittee discussion. But if you have items now, happy to?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, one way we measure is just the number of reservations, which is, you know, council decided to make that. But certainly, another question I have is, how important is drop-in play for pickleball? Because there was an Almanac article, I think, today, that was reported about Atherton's pickleball, and one of the complaints they said interviewing the people playing was they wanted drop-in play? Almanac, the Almanac? Or Atherton Pickleball, yeah. I think it came out today. Yeah, did they interview anyone on?
I had a few questions asked and I provided some response, and I didn't know that the article was out yet, because I still had a couple of questions I needed to respond back to.
Oh, okay, they couldn't wait, I guess.
I guess so.
So, oh, they, they were, they said the comment complaint or the comment request from pickleball players was being able to do drop-in play instead of the reservations?
Right, which we, we raised all along, is the way most people play pickleball. But nobody's dropping in right now, right? Because that's not really part of it.
I don't know that, but I think asking that question?
Sure, sure.
The players is some feedback we can get. Also, in terms of maybe asking people how much they play to figure out if we're going to make it permanent, you know, how many courts are we going to need? And then, who's interested in helping fund it? Might be a question council would be interested in, because, you know, certainly if we decide to do a permanent route, the question of funding is going to come up, and if there's going to be someone who's going to pay for it, that'll make the decision much easier from a financial perspective, than the question of the usage and such. One question I did have for staff was, is there a reason baffling's only on two sides and not on all four? Or is the, is it just a trial to see, like, is it going to make a difference on one side? And then what's it like without it?
So there's a couple of reasons. One was related to, to cost, and where the most benefit would be gained with the baffling.
Okay.
So, the, one of the big concerns raised was the impact of pickleball to the tennis players and baffling that noise from tennis?
Yeah.
And so you have those two sides?
Okay.
That you are protecting. One of those sides is also the Felton Gable side.
Yes.
And so it provides that benefit of helping to block some of that noise from going in that direction.
It's between 1 and 2, 1 and 6.
And so the other thing is, you don't want to do all of them, because then you can't see what's going on in the court.
You really can't. You do anything you want.
Are you making some stereotype about pickleball players?
Say, unlike your normal tennis green screen that you can kind of see through?
Yeah.
You can't see through the baffling material.
Okay, okay.
And so?
And why do you need to see through it?
Why, just from general policing of the park, you want to be able to at least see?
Okay.
The court.
Okay.
And so whether that's one side or two sides, you kind of, then it also, I'm going to say, also aesthetically, I think if you go out there and you notice, the stuff is pretty thick. And if you enclose the entire thing, it's going to really detract, on the outside detract from the nature of the park, I personally think.
I would, I would agree with that. Interestingly, I've only had pickleball players there when I was playing three times, and all three times, they did not have a reservation.
They did not what?
They did not have a reservation. They just walked, walked in.
Okay.
Which is okay. They can do that if nobody's on the court, and there, and there was, obviously there wasn't, so, you know.
Yeah, so anything that, that the pickleball players want to change about how pickleball's set up? What should we keep the end date is another question for the survey, whether we need to extend it, because we need to collect some more data, or we've collected enough data and we're, we're pretty good with it. So, yeah, those were just kind of the things that I was thinking about, about pickleball. The other thing I noticed, because I run at the park every so often, is that the Little League likes to play some, some music while they have their practice, I guess. But I don't know if, if, if there's been any complaints about that from anyone, if you've heard, okay. Are there any other questions or comments on pickleball? If not, we can move on. Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. We already had, I think I already asked, but we can do it again.
Well, this is about pickleball.
Okay.
So, so as a resident, I got to tell you, I've always been wondering how it could take so long to make a decision about pickleball? This whole thing started two years ago?
Yep.
I mean, how could, nothing could take that long. And when this, one of these I sat through months ago, I said, look, the real problem is noise, everyone knows that's the problem. So I did some research and I found the expert in noise for pickleball in a little town called Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Talked to this guy, and he's designed the sound issues in more pickleball courts than you can think of. I mean, hundreds of them, all over California, East Coast, etc. He's one of the judges and the pickleball national championships, which just helped, were just helped. And I highly recommend, I passed on this information to the subcommittee, that the subcommittee should talk to him, explain what we're doing, explain how far we've gotten, and explain the data we have and see if he could give us some advice on how to make the decision better and faster. One of the things he told me is, what's, can you tell me, did anyone know the name of the, the sound installation? What's the name is, what's it called? Goose events, okay, which is the one he said isn't the right one to use, for a lot of reasons. So what I'm saying is there are experts out there in this stuff. We could use and get some data with a lot of experience. In theory, he's the guy that, that Wally's going to talk to about the numbers and, and the testing. Cause he's been through all this and he, as, as Bob said, he'll be able to tell you what's the pickleball, you know, what's the pickleball ball? What's tennis ball? What's the train, et cetera? Uh, so I urge you guys to go use, not, maybe there's somebody better, but somebody like that. To look at the data you have and make this decision faster, better. When, when he looked at the picture of the, of the, of the park, he said, you would never put a pickleball court with those tennis courts. Said they're way too close to the, to the houses. No one would ever do that. They got to be somewhere else. Uh, and between that experience and acoustic materials and all the rest, I highly urge you to find someone like that to help make the decision. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Okay, uh, let's move on to, uh, five C, uh, capital improvement program.
Okay, well, we have the, um, I'm trying to remember the right word. Uh, the luck, I guess, is one way to put it, uh, of having this meeting pretty much right after the council had their first meeting talking about the capital improvement program. Um, so there are a couple of items that that we had put in the proposed capital improvement program budget that we received cap, uh, council feedback on. Uh, those items include, um, the construction funding for the playground, um, which we had carried forward the initial number of a million dollars. Um, the
bathrooms.
Programming of the bathrooms, construction with an allocation of eight hundred thousand for construction. Um, including all site work and the ejector pumps and the various other things that we need for that. And then the last one is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, um, flooring and cosmetic improvements at the Jennings Pavilion and flooring at the main house, both upstairs and in the, um, in the art room. Um, the other item that we had.
So something like a hardwood floor there, that they're saying?
Um, so, one more time?
Uh, like a hardwood floor they want to replace the main house with or?
Well, we figured that both are going to be some sort of engineered wood flooring.
Okay.
Um, both in the pavilion and in the main house.
Okay.
To be determined exactly what that flooring and look are. I think we're going to need some help from the committee in terms of picking samples and, and that kind of thing. Um, so those, and then one of the out items that we had was a refresh of the park master plan, considering that several of the big ticket items are either done or already programmed. And so it's more of a what's next conversation. Um, so we received some feedback, um, and I think it'll be flushed out at their next study session as they go through the entire budget as to whether or not the allocation for, uh, the playground, whether that stays where it's at or shrinks a little bit. Um, whether the bathroom number can be refined. Um, I think there's a, an understanding that the, um, bathrooms need to be replaced. It's really how much do we need to spend on it kind of thing. Um, they're all, uh, supportive of the improvements to pavilion and the main house. And when it comes to the master plan, what they suggested was pushing out a formal refresh um, in lieu of other master plan update priorities. But asking the park and rec committee to kind of take a look at the master plan and come back with a what's next kind of recommendation out of the, out of the park rec committee.
And what, when you say what's next, you mean we recommend what next projects?
Well, basically, so if I look at the master plan, there are things like redoing the circulation. That project is done, right? We're spending a lot of money to take care of, if, if approved, we're spending a lot of money to take care of the bathrooms and the playground.
Mm-hmm.
Big thing, right? Um, there are some things in the master plan that kind of got deleted, whether that's the dog park or other things. There's the, um, amphitheater kind of idea that was in that master plan.
Um, DG, DG around the park.
One more time?
Oh, DG around.
And DG around the park is another thing. And I think that the council would like to fund some of that. They actually did ask us to look at trying to put some money towards partial replacement of the asphalt path. Um, and so if you look at what was in the original master plan and where we are today or where we see ourselves in the next year or so, what are the next things that we need to think about in the park? And so that's, and I'll let council member DeGolia tell me if I am missing the conversation.
No, I, I think that, um, it's wise for Park and Rec to take a look at the existing master plan and to have a discussion about what you recommend to the council in terms of priorities versus things you would ignore in that master plan. Cause the master plan is now about ten years old. And we are not going to formally update that master plan for another two years. Uh, so I think that that would be a wise thing for Park and Rec to engage on.
Okay, but when is council looking for our feedback by?
Well, not this fiscal year.
Okay.
But, you know, you've got a bunch of stuff on your plate right now. But if you, it, you know, if you create a subcommittee or you just have a couple of discussions as a committee beginning over the summer, I think that would be fine.
I, I smell a top three initiative for next fiscal year, getting one of these items. So that's good. So we can schedule it for that. Once, uh, one of these other items rolls off, we can, yeah, I think that's good timing. Okay.
Uh, I agree because I think there are some things in the master plan that have been agreed to that we would or would not do. For instance, the, um, council, uh, recommended that the dog park be taken out of the master plan. And it was voted, it was voted.
Oh, yeah.
That was.
I don't know, is it, I guess the dog park is in the master plan?
It, I don't know if it was ever taken out.
It, it did, it did.
Is it out?
Yes.
Okay, we decided it was in, but.
No, it, it was in the original master plan. It was deleted from it.
Oh, is it, is it gone now?
If you find the online version.
So if I got a copy of it, it would be gone, right? I only have a copy of the old one.
Yeah, if you go online, you'll see that it's been, it was updated, I think about three, two or three.
Yeah, something like that. Okay, good.
To remove, to remove.
Okay, but I, I think too that looking at the master plan, it's ti, it's time to have another discussion as you have, um, proposed.
Um, any questions?
Let me just add, there is one thing the council has approved that's not in the master plan. And actually a couple of things, but they're kind of maintenance, uh, replacing the floor in the pavilion, replacing the carpet in the main house and putting solar panels on the pavilion. And when I say approved, that's in concept because they haven't gotten any dollar amounts related to any of those.
Should, should we put solar panels on the bathrooms or is that usually just too small of an area? Okay. Um, okay. And then, uh, I had a question about, um, current fiscal year projects. Is the circular, circulation plan done now? All the plan construction?
Uh, the initial portions of the circulation project are complete. Uh, there's one or two, there, there, I take that back. There are a few outstanding minor items that need to be done. And that includes, I think there's a curb that's supposed to go along, um, the, the main drive from near where the entry, the last, uh, crosswalk is around towards the main house.
Okay.
Area parking lot. Um, that was put off to correspond with the additional work that we added with regards to some of the asphalt paving work. And so I don't know if you recall, we added, we had a project on the books to do repaving and resurfacing of the lots.
Yeah.
And so weather had an impact on when that could be done. So last month, there was a lot of activity for about a week to do major pavement repairs in the parking lots. Um, but following that, there's some surface sealing that and restriping. And then we have, um, some mill and fill paving work that we still need to get done, but those are all part of the additional work.
Are, are they going to get done by the end of May or?
We're trying to get a schedule from the contractor, but our.
Okay.
Our hope is that they are able to do that pretty soon.
Okay.
They'd like to be out of there as well.
And then is the, uh, Watkins fencing project tied in with the Watkins street improvement? So we.
Yeah, it's, it's tied in with the walkway and that's one of the projects that hasn't moved as quickly as, uh, everybody.
Next fiscal year.
Um, it, it's not dependent on fiscal year. We have.
Yeah, it's the fun, it's already funded, but.
The fencing and stuff is already funded. We just need, as staff, we need to be able to move those, some of these projects.
You guys don't have much to do next year with all the flood control projects. Um, okay. Uh, any other comments? Are there any, uh, public comments online or in person? Online, okay. Uh, why don't we move on to the BrightView quality site assessment?
Yeah, the BrightView assessment is inside your packet. Go ahead and look through it if there's any questions, just let me know.
Are there any questions? Any comments? Any public comments? No? Okay. Then, uh, we can move on. There's nothing on that. Uh, Park Foundation Report? Okay.
So, uh, we are, uh, through every way we will.
You hit your microphone?
We have, um, possibly achieved a sweet spot in dealing with the, um, fountain, found a fountain rest, restorer, restoration company down in, um, San Martin or somewhere in Gilroy. Coming to see the fountain soon, take a look at it, very intrigued by what we have. And has done similar fountains that he said were in a much worse state of repair when he saw them. So we are still planning on reconstructing the fountain.
Okay, so no new fountain at this time it'll be there.
Yeah, keeping the little darlings from climbing on it this time. So.
I will be interested to hear your ideas.
Little plastic explosives around the edge of.
Buzzer wire.
Yeah, things like that.
Uh, Park, uh, seven B Park Division Monthly Report?
Yes, a monthly imports, including your packets. Um, just some highlighted things that we took care of for the month. Uh, we repaired the gutter and the awning completely around of the play school. It had a big leak in classroom number four. Uh, we were able to get that all patched and taken care of and a brand new awning put around that. Uh, the guys worked on the Jennings Pavilion. We had some leaking gutters, so they gutted, put brand new gutters and downspouts and painted that. We've been working on a lot of signage throughout the park, uh, a lot of faded and worn out signage that was replaced. And of course we had our big earth day event where we planted a lot of trees and did a lot of things throughout the park on that day. That's everything for the report.
Any questions or comments? Two things I just wanted to point out on the tennis side is that, uh, it looks like the number of students have doubled year over year. So it's, uh, that's good that we're getting a lot of usage at the tennis courts. Um, also the key holder hours are, have also doubled at least so far this year compared to last year. So that's also good to see. Um, oh, but not great to see is that the clay court is kind of flat in terms of usage year over year, even though the key holder hours are increasing. So it seems like the key holder hours are coming from the hard courts and not really on the clay courts. Um, okay. And then, uh, I think the next one is six C, the, uh, or seven, sorry. I think I picked the wrong one now. Seven C, yeah, the Park Events Report.
Yeah, for the Park Events Report, um, there's a printout of the calendar and everything for May. We do have some things. Uh, day use, private meetings, our classes, um, and some rentals. For the month of April, our revenue was down compared to last month. Um, significantly. Yeah, our revenue was only thirteen hundred and seventy-five dollars, which primarily just day use rentals and stuff like that. No major events or anything that was set up. Moving forward, we are doing tours right now and working out stuff. Myself and Francesca are working on the, um, you know, showing people around and, and doing the walkarounds and showing of the rental facilities. Um, our temporary employee Diane is no longer with us right now. We're in the middle of, of trying to find somebody else to kind of fill that void and do that paperwork and stuff like that. And we're in the midst of that. Um, we have found a gentleman and he's supposed to be coming tomorrow to do some training and he will help out with, with that process.
Okay.
But right now that's pretty much what we have.
Any questions or comments?
Sooner we get Jennings Pavilion done, uh, the quicker we're going to start making some money with renting it, I would think. That's pretty.
I have, uh, just in accordance with that, I have had a couple of contractors come out and look at the floor and we got gathering quotes and bids on how much it would cost to do that kind of, you know, plain flooring or something like that in the main house and. So, yeah, once we, and make those improvements in turn, I hope that that's going to raise the, uh, you know, the events numbers.
Do you have a report on why she left?
Uh, it was just out of, uh, I don't know how to word that. It's just, uh.
I say, it, it just didn't work out.
Yeah.
But wasn't based on how much there was for her to do in the.
No, I, I say, I mean, it was hourly position, that kind of thing. There were just some, uh, things on her side that didn't pencil out very well for her in terms of things. And there were some other issues, but we're hopeful that the new temp will work out and we'll see how many proposals we get for event management services. Those are due this month.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the weddings and corporate rentals did drop off quite a bit this fiscal year. Um, is it more of a matter of the transition? Cause you know, we, we lost cater two, then we had the temp and then we lost the temp and.
It's, it's going to be a combination of things.
Yeah.
Um, as Cater Two pointed out, for them, numbers were dropping and they weren't getting enough business. We are not doing any active marketing.
Okay.
Because that's part of the job of the, the vendor. And so going out, finding people and promoting the park and those kinds of things, those aren't happening now.
When we hire, when we hired this new gentleman, will that person be, uh, do, doing the promotion or they're just filling out?
At, at, at this point, we are just trying to keep the, those that are interested in renting, being able to rent the facilities, make sure that we're able to open them and have them use the facilities. So we're kind of, we don't have the capacity, even with attempt, to promote and fulfill services of a vendor company.
Okay, okay.
And so I, I think what we're hope, what we want is to find a, a vendor that we can establish a long-term relationship with that can take on, um, the events at the park, uh, help promote it within what our expectations of use are.
Mm-hmm.
And you say the other benefit is having somebody that deals with those events and stuff. They can tell us what needs to be improved. What would be worthwhile and provide us those kinds of inputs.
And we had an RFP out for, uh, a vendor to come in.
Yeah, it's currently out. I think it's due next week if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, okay.
The fifteenth, so maybe in two weeks. If you have anybody that may be interested, please, please send them the link, have them look at it. I'm a little concerned that we haven't received any questions. And so I don't know if we are gonna get a response, so if you, it's online. I'm happy to, I'll send you an email, Ken, and you can send it to anybody you want. And so I, you know, I'll I'll send that out to all the committee members as well as Ken, just in case you know of a vending company that may be interested in in doing it, so. The more hands we get it out to, the better, so.
And then.
I think.
Similar vein, how's whatever the Madame Colette, how's she doing over there? Has anybody heard how she?
Not under the purview of the committee, but happy to have a side conversation.
About five minutes. So, last item is seventy, any individual committee member comments? The one thing I wanted to see, did we, uh, next month, we're gonna schedule the play school to come in, so Susan will tell us how how things are going there. This fiscal year, we haven't yet covered Little League or Brightview, but I was wondering how important it is for the committee members if we cover it June, July.
I have spoken to the commissioner of the Little League and he's willing to come in also on the June fifth. Needs be. Um, Brightview, I have not reached out to.
Yeah, so I'm gonna say my suggestion is not bringing Brightview in. If you have issues and concerns with regards to park maintenance. Bring it to us. We manage their contract. Unlike the others where we're providing facilities for their, whether it's their business or whatever, this is a maintenance contractor that we contract with. And so.
And our um yearly meeting schedule, we had a Brightview report, I think, scheduled for June.
Is it? Okay.
That's why I was asking.
I apologize. I I'd rather.
I mean, it's it's fine if we don't normally bring in Brightview. If you or Will wants to do the report, that's fine, but I was just.
And I think one of the things that you have, now that we have Brightview, that you didn't have when we had MC, is you're getting these monthly reports. And I'm hope, I'm hoping that they're detailed enough that it provides sufficient information about kind of the maintenance that goes in the park.
Walt were here, he, no, he would be the one to tell us, like, yes, bring him in or no, it's okay. I know he's the one who's most interested in the uh.
Generally, I think we've collectively been happy with the the maintenance. There's a few things, always a few things here and there, but I think basically, you know, the committee has even said it's a marked improvement over what the status was.
So I just want to ask the committee if they're interested in getting the Little League in. I I don't think we've traditionally had them in, but they were. Are there any? Little League. Okay.
They aren't normal to come in.
Okay, then, well, i- if there's no interest in or any problems we've had, then we can, we don't have to schedule them then, yeah.
The only problem I remember was ten years ago when they wanted to utilize it in a longer period and they were going to use it for playoff games and sectionals and things like that, which would have put it out a month maybe or more after, I remember, but.
I I think at this point, the only real issue is, do they have anything they want to raise to us?
Yeah, exactly.
There there was one item that somebody from, I think, one of the parents raised and they wanted to talk about potentially putting in a um.
Was this from last year?
A little cage or something.
A batting cage?
I don't remember if it was a batting cage or a pitching cage, but it might have been a small batting cage, but um.
Well, that was maybe a year ago, so we, but we haven't heard any follow. I mean, the Little League hasn't asked themselves, so.
If if you want to hear that proposal, we can reach out to them, otherwise I would say.
I'll I'll wait for them to reach out to us, that's fine. Okay, so we can skip Little League and then uh and when June, when Walt gets back, we'll see if we want to schedule Brightview like for July or something like that. Okay, um, next meeting is June fifth, six thirty. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.